Okay, it's six P M. Um, this is Mark Tucker Superintendent. I'm gonna call this special meeting to order. This is the, I'm doing this because we don't have a board chair yet. Uh, we'll go around the room. I asked everybody here in the room to introduce themselves.
Yeah. Clayton Cargill.
Tim Dettmar.
Natalie Conway, secondary.
Sarah Walsh, elementary principal.
Okay, and Dave Toll, who is the other, uh, board member who's not here or may be joining us late. So the first order of business tonight is to elect a chair of the board for the soon year. I'll open the floor to nominations. Anybody like to offer nomination for chair of the Danville School Board? Okay. Tim nominates Clayton Cargill. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Eric will second. Okay. Are there any other nominations for chair of the?
Let's just ask Miles you want to do. You wanna do it? I step aside, step aside if I only want to.
I just need to get a little chirping out here.
I'm not all, that's a lot more fun.
That's my job.
I might, I might, I might really hold you back.
Okay, I hear no other nominations. Is there any discussion of Clayton Cargill as the chair of the board? A caller question, all in favor of Clayton Cargill serving as the chair of the Danville School Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Clayton is not voting, uh, but we have a majority of the board and you've elected Clayton, chair of the Danville School Board, so I will turn the meeting over to Clayton.
Thank you, everybody, for your, uh, confidence. I'm gonna say thank you for the assignment. Yes. You're welcome. I'm also your parents. The next, um, the next item on this agenda is to elect a vice chair. And as I just mentioned, uh, they told was not here. As indicated, they took a long time by sheer. Service vice chair. If anyone's interested in that, anybody has an idea, so.
I will nominate the adult.
Nomination for day twelve, Tim San will nominate the adult as vice chair.
Oh, second.
Molly. Second, Tim told vice chair. Tim. They told us by shit. You don't need this kind of. Very none, all in favor of electing they told vice chair of.
Aye.
Aye as well. Um, thank you, Dave. Uh, next on, next order of business is the clerk. Molly is our longstanding clerk at this point. She's been part of the three. Um, she's already taken a note, maybe a hint that she wants to.
All right.
A lot of times nobody takes them until after, but.
Oh, okay.
Um, but sometimes if we do that, we feel that just starts taking notes. It's a real indicator to the rest of us.
Well, I would love to nominate.
My my system now, okay.
I will second, yeah. A lot of, a lot of times the new guys have to be the clerk. In my experience, the new guy. I have a nomination for. I have a second for Molly Greenson has the purpose for in further discussion. Turn on all of that motion there. Um, next, we have the job of electing two, um, representatives to the C, two representatives to the CCSU school board and an alternate. Um, the alternate is very vestigial. It's a thing that, that when times were more contentious, we needed the alternate. We continue to draft up an alternate. It's usually helpful. It's helpful to have somebody to go up there and sit when we need votes and. So somebody has to basically come to the meetings and sometimes in an advisory role, sometimes. In that case, I would encourage Eric to, to either be a member of this other board or an alternate, because at that board, we often discuss policy. When we discuss things that you can get more information about, um, things. Uh, but first CCSU board members, you can hit, because I'm stuck on that for sure. So you can hit me first if you want.
I'll nominate Clayton.
So you gotta do, we gotta do one at a time. There's not enough of us. It's a nomination and the second, and you can give me a nomination for Clayton, second for Clayton, seven on the CCS. There's not enough of us for to discuss it. All in favor of Clayton for the CCSU school board, please say aye.
Aye.
We have one member of the CCS. Second member of the CCSU school board, um, I'll ask you, Eric, if you want to be a member, you want to be a.
Uh, is it once a month?
Once every two months, possibly put an extra. And then when you get up into there in the budget season, you get a lot more information about the budget sooner.
Okay.
And so a lot of times in October, there's a couple of meetings and you start getting budget information, but adding quickly so that you have a better understanding of what's going to go.
Okay, uh, I'm happy to be a member.
The next meeting is the, that's just the third Monday of every other month, so.
I only went, I was off of it. I only went because there were a lot of times months I couldn't go, so I served at Melissa's place, so I can, or Tim would like to. What job says Tim wanted to?
Tim is a nominee.
Yeah, that's a job.
A very good one.
What happened to them?
If, if you're a member and she's an alternate, you can come, you can both come, you can always come.
If you need me to go, don't, okay, that's fine.
Okay, yeah.
So the, the SU board has asked that alternates plan to attend.
Oh, okay.
For continuity purposes.
Right.
So that, you know, you can ever be having a discussion. The next time you can't, the, one of the regular reps can't be there.
Okay.
The alternates office.
Do most of them go? All the other, all the, all the, so, no.
I would say that Danville Board is very, been very responsible about attendance and I'll leave it there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would say.
No, uh, but you went to some age, but and then you checked in.
That wasn't a criticism.
Yeah.
You come if you can, if you can, but.
I mean, I think after going, like, it's up there coming off, I still make sure it improves whatever.
But we had to fill in the last minute.
Yeah, yeah, I, I have essentially one a week every, out of every six weeks that I'm, that I'm on the. So, yeah, happy.
I'll nominate here. I have a nomination for Eric as CCSU board member.
Yeah, that.
Move forward in a second. I have a second for just Eric to ask CCSU. All in favor of Eric as CCSU board member?
Aye.
I have a motion here.
Eric, you're E R I C.
Right, and that leaves us with the alternate and. Molly will do that, and you can have Molly already.
Okay.
She can instantly keep herself.
Very shared, not a mate too.
Yeah, I can, I can just do that and, okay, yeah. But the ones here, I.
They're always, they're always here and we'll talk about your attendance.
I'll nominate Molly as the alternate. I'll second.
I don't, I'm gonna nominate at a second on that motion, all in favor of Molly Greenson as the alternate of CCSU. Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have CCSU board assignments set. So on one of those next CCS.
The third Monday in April. Seventeen, fifteen, sixteen.
I wanna, I wanna say.
Fifteen, because they ate the.
Treaded in the needle, right?
One eight fifteen.
Got it.
Every other month, right?
The CCA will put every, every other, even numbered months, third Monday.
Third Monday at what time?
Fifteen.
Six o'clock in this. So that's officially, actually. Okay, um, the next two, so for committee assignments, the next one, we have assigned to the negotiations council. And, um, we have an assignment of superintendent evaluation committee. And, um, I'm, we're currently negotiating, uh, support staff contracts. I'm currently involved in that. As I say, very, I sit in the room and I try to remember the things that are happening, but I, I feel very involved in that process that's ongoing. The meetings are in the middle of the day and I don't have a job, so I'm probably your guy.
Anyone else that really want to be on negotiation?
You could also be on negotiation. Want to hear about it?
I do have a day job, so.
Anybody who wants to, that's not conflicting. But you don't teach your, your spouse works, you don't, so not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you okay doing it again?
It's, it has to be done, so, and I don't have a job.
I nominate Clayton.
That's how it works. That's how this works, you guys. Don't feel bad about it. This is the way it is. So I have a nomination for me, uh, to join the committee that I'm already on. I have second for me to join the committee that I'm already on for the negotiations that were. All in favor of me being on a committee and doing the thing I'm gonna be doing, negotiations, please say aye. Uh, superintendent evaluation committee. This is, this is a new assignment that we talked about in the past year at the CCSU level, bringing this to every board and having this committee exist rather than chase for it. Because that, because coming up in next year, we have a new superintendent and after that, there's gonna be some point at which, um, it is required to have an evaluation superintendent every year anyway. That's, that's an upcoming, you know, thing that we've been told. To exact, it's like as a, as a law or a rule, one or the other. So this, this, we do have to be in place. And each board in the CCSU will place numbers onto superintendent evaluation committee so that it's in place, so that we can just call them. As opposed to having to chase the meetings, which takes so much. Do we need two representatives or does the CCSU board or the district?
It's all in the two times an hour's evaluation.
I don't think it's multiples. We did, the, the, the last committee was fine. The last committee, we sent one.
Okay.
I have to say it? Can you just do it and do I have to say it?
I'll nominate Clayton.
Don't make me beg, don't make me beg. I, I will sit on the superintendent evaluation committee if you're left. Um, we've just finished an evaluation. I'll, I'll, either I chaired the last superintendent evaluation committee. So sort of have an expectation for this.
I'll, I'll say.
You just put your name in all the rest of the empty ones.
I think there's only one more that I've got. There's only one more that I've gotta take here, but it's not the bar. No, maybe two more. The warrant and the one above that one. So, um, we're gonna next set the regular board meeting schedule, and this is pretty well set in stone. It's been since, at, at least ten years, it's been the first Tuesday of every month at six o'clock in this building. Does anybody have a problem with the first Tuesday of every month, six o'clock in this building being a regular scheduled? So let's just accept that by this. We agree that that is the time that we will meet. When there are meetings that are not at that time, they become special meetings. When we need other meetings, we'll call the meetings as needed. And when there are, are other things, we'll call, actually, so we are gonna set that by consensus. Um, the next thing on the agenda would be schedule an annual schoolwork retreat. And I will tell you that at the supervisory union level with the new superintendent, in the April meeting, we're going to be discussing enlisting the aid of the V S B A to, um, have a retreat as an entire CCSU board, series of boards. In part of getting some working knowledge of the new superintendent and his expectations, and so we probably hope to expect that sometime in June. And so I would like for that to be something that you consider and expect an invitation to, and then accept the invitation to that. For retreats, since we've never actually had one.
And that would be, this, in lieu of a district board retreat that you never have.
In lieu of a district board retreat we never have, I would think that if, if, once the SU schedules it, I will let you know that it's, that, 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 we're scheduling it, it's on the agenda for the eighteenth of April, on an agenda that I have not yet seen. Because it doesn't exist.
Do you have any idea what? Time of day, day they're thinking. Look at Saturday or.
I don't know, give me, I'll, I'll, but I'm probably willing to listen to suggestions. But I would, I would imagine that it's still gonna be during the school year, so Saturday might make sense, Saturday afternoon.
Saturday mornings are better for me, but it's just.
I, I'm a garbage man on Saturday mornings. The job, the job I don't have.
How about Sunday mornings?
You're gonna have some high school graduation.
Well, that's just it. It's like, that's a tough, tough month.
Maybe, okay, maybe in July, maybe, because the superintendent of schools didn't actually have a work here until July.
Well, we often, we always have a meeting.
So.
I can tell you that Peachum for the last two years has done their district board retreat like on Thursday morning. And, and made that work.
Which is awesome, but not for a teacher in June.
Not for a teacher in June.
No, not for a teacher in June, they, you get them.
Right, I got you.
Yeah.
So if we can leave that one table until we find out someone, which, yes, you work, which might, we might find out two meetings. But I anticipate that, um, where we can actually anticipate one of those, as a larger group.
Maybe if that, I wonder if we're all there, if we break out a small board, go into that, and you could talk about our own stuff, or is that, is it gonna be planned by somebody else?
Well, we, we could get facilitated and we're also.
Instead of having to do something another time.
Well, again, like, if it's in July, we often don't even need July, so it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be like in addition.
Right.
It would be.
Immediate, yeah.
Ironically, August. It's the, I'm subject to power markets of August. Besides December, besides December, yeah, August is, yeah, yeah, the last one. Texas power. All right. I think of what that is. Sadly, not. Uh, we're gonna next designate official newspapers and posters. We have traditionally used for our posting locations, I think March, that's where the stuff there, we use the Danville Post Office, we use Marty's. We use the school itself and we use the Hastings. As our four posting locations, and this is the CCSU posting board outside on the town hall, or actually the town hall. So town hall.
School.
School. Marty's. Hastings store.
And hotel.
Yeah, so we use those five, we use those five, uh, buildings as our posting locations. I'm not sure.
But what are the, I don't only get four on.
The other one's the CCSU office, she posted on the town.
Oh, very.
She posted at town hall.
Yep.
I don't know if you want this. So that's, that's the fifth one. And so we have those, the posting locations and Katie for those up. And then we also use as our official newspaper for posting, the town hall. And does everybody agree to that?
Yep.
So if I can, since this will agree that those are our posting locations. Uh, communication practices and complaints. Um, Mark, you wanna, you wanna talk about, um, especially to a board member, um, workflows and, um, how things work with operations versus something?
Yeah, um, so the board is responsible for ensuring the school is operated in accordance with statute, but the operational responsibility lies in the superintendent's office. So there's the board doesn't run the school. The board directs the superintendent. The superintendent that is straight. Um, one of the things that in terms of communications, where that comes into play is that you will have from time to time, no doubt, you'll have somebody to know in the community who has a concern about something that happened at school. Come to you and say, Eric, what are you gonna do about this? Frankly, what you should be doing is saying, I'm gonna take it. So there's, you know, we have a chain, we take in terms of a chain of command here, which starts literally. So this'll come up sometimes. I get this a couple of times a month, so much panel email, you know, upset about something happened at the school and what did the, and my response is, what did the teacher say? What did the principal say? And if I don't have responses to both the votes, and I just. Set it back, because we should be going through the, you know, classroom teachers resolve a lot of issues that principals don't find out about, maybe until after the fact. Which is great, and then you two resolve things that I don't necessarily. And superintendent, I've always trusted, uh, the principals to bring things to me that are problematic. Get advice or just like a heads up, or you're gonna hear from this parent or whatever it might be. Uh, but that's, there is a chain of, so what we always encourage board members to do is to be mindful of that and not feel like oh, well, my next door neighbor had, is concerned about this, so let me go to the school and figure out how this is gonna get addressed. You know, let me go to the town school, Howard, seven hit drives.
The rest of that is, it's, it feels hard not to.
Yeah.
Feels hard not to help your friend, or feels hard not to help somebody that sounds a little bit difficult. And you wanna help them, and so then in that case, if you're not sure. And then you can figure it out together, but basically those are stream and pushback. You're saying, you can say that we're teacher, principal, superintendent in that order, so they have an idea that, that you're, that all of our messaging is the same about problems go too small. And you, you, they may come back to you and, but you may not think it'll come up, but you'll have this come up. And this comes up way more often than. So it's just one of those things, just all, you'd always keep in mind that can't fix it on your own and we need them. We're here to, we're, we're here to supervise budgets and supervise policies and make sure policies are in place. A lot of times, it's our job not to, it's our job not to. So that the project, you, you do have to be involved around it.
Yeah, that's a good, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that, because from time to time, there are things that come up. You know, like employee discipline matters that could rise, that could come before the school board, are things that I try very hard not to give uh, information to the board unless it gets to, no. So we, you know, like a teacher termination, it's something to fear somewhat. And that employee had an op, option or opportunity in the statute to appeal our recommendation of terminating that teacher. And that would have come before the board and the board that's sitting, it was a judicial format to, to decide if my recommendation was, was held or not. So premature knowledge of details of the case aren't appropriate to provide, you know, to bias you. So superintendent, I've always drawn a really firm line, it's like, I'm not gonna tell you what's going on until it's time for you to know. And that's for the protection of the process.
I think the tricky thing is when the kids in school, two years wearing, like, you're, you're also talking to parents, so you're really kind of disparaging when the parent hat on and you have your board, board number hat on and.
Sure.
You know, it's kind of confusing.
Or if your kid's in the class where it happened.
Coaching kid that there's so few people doing so, so many things, and so people will, they'll, they'll get anybody's ear to start telling them what. So, I just, it's just a thing to be, you know, to, to be concerned about, and then just if you have questions, you can ask me, if you have additional questions, you can ask the superintendent. Or the new superintendent, or, see, and he's gonna have to talk this as well, in his role, he could have to, he's learned his role as well through communication. So sack that. Um, I don't think that's him that complains communication practices is pretty well laid out there.
So did you all get, um, something, uh, something from Katie with your code of ethics?
Yeah, the code of ethics went around, did everybody do it?
Yeah.
We did, Doc, Doc, he signs a lot easier than some of the other.
I think that's, this year was the first time we tried that. Yeah, it's been a real time saver.
I did not hear back from Katie, somebody didn't. I didn't hear back. So. That means people.
She said that today, right?
Yesterday. Did you get something?
Oh, yeah. He said, he said, he said, he did that, signed, um, that he just worked it all parts, so.
Yeah, you'll, you'll get to know Katie.
She's a god. Yes, she's very, very, very patient, very nice.
Very nice and very.
But she, she needs help, you know, she needs help for people to fill out the papers, that's all. All right, so that's that. Um, the statewide health insurance needs a voting delegate for, um, the occasional thing.
Well, they're, and they're going into negotiation, so that will be a necessary role. We didn't need one last year, but that's just ramping up right now, so.
Somebody, somebody to read a lot of papers, they, where they don't have a job, and then.
My gosh, I would love to not make, but.
I mean, I have an idea of how great things are.
You might be.
Yeah, exactly. I can't.
From Tim to nominate Clayton as the voting delegate for statewide health insurance, as a second for Eric.
Yeah, okay, Eric.
With no further discussion, all in favor of, um, that you're doing something of your own.
Oh, wow.
We want six months, so you, so this one takes.
Oh, gotcha.
This year we need action, so.
But I'm never here. That's probably. Very. Like, they chase me for every paper they need. Come do this, okay, be open. I, I leave five in the morning. Five at night, so. I don't have to, it's how I function.
Oh.
I don't, I don't function in the afternoon, I break shift.
Okay.
So I'm a morning planner, prepper.
Mm-hmm, always good to see it. Okay, so a motion, a second to nominate to vote for Clayton as statewide healthcare delegate for voting, please say aye.
Aye.
Signers of warrants, um, signers of warrants, you have to go in and read over the checks and sign up on all the basketball records. There's the limitless, limitless basketball referee check that, which we'll talk about at the SU level soon enough, about how many records. But all the other things, the, um, how the SU pays itself, how the SU pays itself from the, the regular town budgets, how many cycles to do, you look over all those papers. All right, um, assessments, tuitions to allow, um, situations to come off those checks, um. Somebody has to go into the office and sign. Um, so on this one, we'll take an alternative case.
I'll second the, uh, something you're taking the first round.
Okay, so, uh, a motion to.
I think I've been a backup.
You know, you guys are putting all of your eggs in one bag.
You didn't go.
Yes, I said very nice.
Think it's sick.
Right.
You can do it when you, but you can do it when you're sitting in a virtual, yeah.
Other boards do it, other boards.
Every other person.
No, no.
They do. They don't?
They would, they would, but they don't have a claim.
You have to go, you have to go, we have to be ready, because I'm, I have to be in front of Phyllis Sweeney. Like, Phyllis Sweeney, if you tell Phyllis Sweeney there's something to do, she will stand on their toes until she can do it, even if she has to wait, so, so it's a race with Phyllis for me to get there, so if those are afraid, we, being kind of something really odd. You can do it if you want.
No.
I'll, I'll, I'll withdraw my nomination, you, you can, um, you can do it. It's, I find valid and information to have, definitely much check for going out.
You know what's gonna happen if I do it?
Yes. I'm gonna still do it, but I'm gonna have to sit next to you.
You should probably do it, I'd do. So, so, well, if I do it.
So I have a motion for me to do it, I have a, uh, second for me to do it, all in favor of me being the signer of warrants, Clayton, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Who was the second for, I, I just.
Right, so now I would ask somebody to nominate Molly as the alternate, because she also was vocal, and she also can get there. I would give a damn. I've given you the work for a while, so that's a, that's a nomination, it's a second, and it, it's the years go by, you guys, it takes a job to wait. Right now, it seems the most nice. Motion and a second, all in favor of Molly being the alternate for signer of warrants. Molly is the signer of warrants.
Or second.
Second signer of warrants, so we have two signers of warrants that we can put on the forms. And that currently concludes our re, reorganization of the board. I'll get with you on what the CCSU board is like, and then pass that.
The CCSU board will reorganize and people, uh, following the CCSV elect.
See, and there'll be some, there'll be some other change. Which CCSV has a name. CCSV had a number nine, what we election. Moving on, um, January eleven, we have minutes, we have three sets of minutes, not four. Um, the, the fourth set of minutes that's gonna be on there was the minutes for, you know, informational meeting from the fourth, and they don't really need to be on there, it's just, it just satisfying these, right? And so I, I can't give you where it's unapproved, and then you tell me, but, but they're in now, so she can post them.
Okay.
But I can't move them over to the next year. So, um, January eleventh, they have a building committee meeting that needs to be, um, approved, and I've got three of us here that can approve it. Molly with the minutes, I read the minutes when she voted. Molly wrote the minutes, I wrote the minutes when she voted.
Can I approve?
Yeah, you, you're supposed, you, you can make every, every one of these motions if you vote, you took them up. So you can, you can give the motion. He wasn't, he's a member of the public.
Motion, did you make a motion?
I can't make a motion. Right, so this is, we're gonna approve, I wrote, I wrote a type of rate twenty six minutes, which are non-binding informational only. And, uh, there was no business conducted. Uh, so you, you, you're gonna, you're gonna approve that one only by consensus. Okay, so that one's gonna be approved by consensus, so just, then your motion can be denominated January eleventh, building committee, and February sixteenth.
Alright, I moved to approve.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, and I have those three of us on there, we'll move forward at that point that appeared, can approve those minutes. All are favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
That's two, I also vote yes, Eric abstains having not been. Three, both carries though. February twenty sixth, a non-binding informational only meeting. I was there with Melissa Conley and Mark, looking at presentation to a simple town vote, no business was conducted. This, it was not an informational meeting only, there's no, there's no reason for whole minutes except for our own personal accountability. They're in place, there's a, there's a place in the grid for them, I'd like to approve it by. Thank you. But the consensus of the board that February twenty sixth informational meeting minutes are approved. There'll be one more of those, I got them in late, and this is when, this is when Katie will be back, one of those minutes. So I got them too early. Alright. That is the reorganization of the board, that is all the minutes, we're almost updated. Um, administrative reports, um, I don't know how much you got done.
I didn't, I have not written a report this month, I mean, there's. It's, it's been budgeted and, you know. Informational meeting, passing budget, going to town meeting.
It remains telling that you live three blocks from a meeting that you've still never been to. Every single, all, all five years.
Yeah.
And there's cookies that.
I can walk to the north.
Yeah, I know, I know how much you like cookies and they have cookies and. Never there to eat.
Some reason nobody thought of bringing one.
Well, I, I had to get back, I was stuck in the corner for a long time, uh, former facility.
Oh.
So.
Oh, yeah.
So no report, no superintendent, uh, the information stays roughly the same, you get hired a new superintendent, which I'm talking about. I did get a nice principal's report, thank you ladies, um, very detailed, it's very nice to see. Um, it's nice that we're back, um, I, again, I, I need to make clear how much I appreciate the communication in the community. It, 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 it softens the blow of a lot of things, it gives people things to think about, look at, and remember that, um, they're being talked to. And it opens lines of communication with people, and I'm sure that you're noticing that.
And they're bit, it's visually attractive too, the, the. Yeah, the, yeah, the newsletters, you know, they, and I take that makes a different suit, because it's. It's not just like spray text, like my way, that reports.
But they, I mean, it, it, it engenders conversation that people don't even necessarily have to have, but they know that they could speak, that's, that's what I think about it. I thought they only have to speak, and it is one of the things that we were. And it's like you are.
I think glad to be delivering one piece. Thinking about the comments made at town meeting, is that a come up? I don't, not to the fat, more your plate, but I think. People don't understand what interventionist is, or what a parent educator is, or I think, or I think it's some sort of. I think if we can connect, um, what the town's investment is, I think there's a huge disconnect, that's not our fault, it's just the way we're structured, I think. In the state of Vermont.
We did that last year with the interventionalists, so that's really easy to find, we kept the whole.
It also doesn't help on interventionist that there's two different kinds of interventions.
Right, it's really, yeah.
Well, it, it's also not cute and fun to report. So, like, these other reports you send out, it's like, interesting and fun.
We could do like staff spotlights though, or something.
Yeah. Who's who.
Yeah, and we know, because we have kids in the schools, I know, you know, when there isn't somebody there, what happens, you know, there's some help in the classroom or it's. I think just if you can somehow relay it to people who don't have that firsthand experience about how important. Those positions are and what they really do, I think that would be helpful.
The intervention would be really easy, it's either last February or last March support meeting. It was right before, but, right before the budget, so maybe it'd be January, February, maybe.
While you're at it, if you want to explain what a superintendent is for the. Because people don't understand that, and you feel like taking that on a whole.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, no. You don't know what I do either. You know, that, that was one of my takeaways from the meeting, some of those questions are like, they don't even know what, what a central office is.
It's, it, it, it's, it's a common perception, and that in the community, there is, there's, there's a longstanding perception. That people that work in the central office get paid a lot of money and all. And, um, if you work in the schools, um, in that, in that particular analogy, work really hard and don't make a lot of money. But then the minute that you step back on the budget, also teachers make too much money and don't work for it. And it's, so it's, all, and it's, it's just, and a lot of this is, it's just a factor of the taxes, it's just a factor of not, not being. It's so immersed in the knowledge and of the wording, or what the words mean to understand all of the different parts, and it's not anything, you know, it's. People are paying the tax dollars, they don't always know what to do. And it's difficult to explain, so it's, it's, some of this is just reflexive.
Oh, I get.
Yeah, and. I mean, it, it, the more we can explain, the better, the more we can explain, I mean, you know, there's, I had against several people and they say, I just wish that you, there was a way that you could tell me more, and I said, well. They said, maybe you could send out flyers and so, we have kids in the school, no. And it's, you know, can't say neighbors, that, but that's trouble, you know, it's just that.
Or you could shop on field trip, get first.
Yeah, that, that'll break them.
You could sub, we always leave subs.
I mean, yeah. Once people see, understand, it's hard, you know, I just think there's such a, just a disconnect with our funding system in Vermont, that people are getting farther and farther away. From what they're investing in, um, and seeing that impact of their.
So with your communication skills. Do a lot of stuff.
Already drafting.
I did have, oh, one quick question, just because I'm, uh, just to fill in my ignorance on this, I did not go to school, high school here in Vermont, um. So the V T cap, uh, is grades three for not, through, three through nine for English and math.
And science.
And then, yeah, five, five, eight and eleven percent. Is there anything like in like high school that, uh, is any sort of assessment for that Vermont requires?
That's gone away in most states, like, so what, what, we had the, most of us at the table probably had that, like you have. Your junior year, doesn't it?
Uh, New York State, so. Yeah, which was not just a test, it was.
Yeah.
Like ten of them or something, right?
Uh, ev- you had four every year, I, at least four every year of high school.
And I don't know, I mean, I don't know about these arts, but that doesn't exist in a lot of states anymore, they've gone to this standardized test state model. Like, this is a nationwide assessment.
The state test basically exists under a couple of different publishing companies across the country, there's two major publishing companies. So every state rebranded it, but it's, it's the same two versions, basically.
Gotcha.
Statewide test, it's administered by.
And it's, it, it is, it's, I mean, because you had to take a test, I think my junior year. You could take it earlier and pass it earlier, but if you didn't pass it by your junior year, you'd have like mitigation stuff, um.
Oh, yeah, no, ours was like every year, and if you didn't pass it, you had to take that, that year over again, in that subject.
But in Vermont, they don't overtie standardized testing too.
Graduation now, and a lot of states, so it's just.
Yeah.
Okay. Which becomes problematic. But in, 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 in this school, we, we're using flexible pathways, we're, we're, we're really trying to make it, um, easier for kids to find a way of graduating, you know, way that makes them. And, um.
Well, yeah, so I guess, I guess that's a longer question for later, as we talk about discussing the community, like, how do we discuss success? Will all those interventionists, all those educators, with, with. You know, that if, if there aren't sort of those two.
Are those collected on intervention, I've heard somebody say that they, they could show that with their interventionists that. Those incidents actually decreased in the school.
Yeah, I mean, those data points still exist, and I would say honestly, like those standardized tests, the end of year standardized tests are. One of the worst markers for basing, um, basing that data.
There's no reason for students to be affected in that, so they don't always try their part.
And, and this, this year.
Sure, and.
But this year is even harsh, normally we don't test until May.
Yeah, yeah.
We start testing in.
Yeah, I saw, I saw the.
So. That's a lot, because you have, oh, you have still two and a half months of your school year that hasn't even been taught yet. And, yeah, kids are gonna be tested on it. Um, so there's different local assessments, we call them, that kids take throughout the year, um. At a set time, and then teachers do different smaller assessments, even at that range, so we test. Um, with our local assessments in the fall, in the winter and then in the spring.
So that's basic reading, like literacy.
Literacy.
But the other problem that also exists, it's just like even with first grade grading, it's about vocabulary that's changed too, and so like. A grade that you send home to a parent of mine, though, you can't think like that, did when they were in Texas, I mean, it's always that question of what. What am I actually getting for information and how do I?
Those indicators are helpful, I find, just ones that are, of course, important for parents, you know, as a parent, you don't know what your kid should be knowing, you know? So just to see where, you know, maybe some teachers don't like the grades, I don't know, but it's helpful to see what in fourth grade. Is required or expected by the end of the year and.
According to my kid, fourth grade went fine, and according to my other kid, fourth grade went great, and so that's, but according to my kid, fifth grade went fine. And sixth grade went well, sixth grade went well, and then after that, he stopped doing, doing fine, started well. Started, I was, he just, um, just looking at.
And our report cards in elementary, we did a huge shift with them, so that they are aligned with standards, and so each of, like, when you get. Your kid's report card, each of those things are end of year benchmarks for first grade, that he should, that he should hit. Um, and it's a little different in middle and high school, um, but it kind of helps you understand, by the end of first grade, you might get should. Be able to do these things.
Okay, no, thank you, I, like I said, it's a, it's a, it's a blind spot of mine, so, uh, but as we, maybe it's a longer discussion, so. How can we communicate sort of success of that we've had, because I know that you guys have changed a lot of programs. A lot of that stuff, so how do you actually?
How do you convey it to the community?
Without saying, hey, we feel like we're doing a really good job, which is.
Or we have goals around that, are there, do we set goals around? We're sort of like, we're kind of a graduate. Books understand at the end, the end goal, that is what that looks like and.
But I think if, if you were gonna do that, then how many standards they actually have, you know, like how many of the, like, of the portrait of a graduate, they did this, this much work. Through the flexible pathways, a couple of those, yeah, several different portraits of graduate.
Yeah.
Because if you had, if you had a portrait of a graduate that spent half the time, decades and. You had one that, I'm just, mostly with academics, you had two, you, you could show the flexible pathways out. And you get, I mean. Just as a way to do it, portrait of a middle school kid.
Right, how we know they're doing well, you know, or how we don't think they're doing well, essentially the big, the big question about.
Can we get out sort of the message of like, this is a good school, or like, what is. And, and if we can't get that out, what do we have to do? Yeah, that's, that's where I was asking about, sort of these.
I think, I think that ties in though to the reading piece that, uh, is in our notes, like, we.
Yeah.
We need a lot of work, we don't have vertical mindset, if not that we're not teaching reading well. Um, in elementary and in middle school, but there's. Uh, having teachers describing that one aspect of literacy. The same way since year to year, gives kids a continuity that is essential to their learning and their growth.
Yeah.
And so that's, uh, been a big missing piece, uh, the difficulty of that, when you implement new, maybe. Curriculum or programmatic change, it would take several years to see the data, I think, are hoping.
Yeah, the hard part is that best with this year's.
Yeah, yeah.
Yielding three years from.
So, but that, that's part of it, it's, you know, I think we are a strong school, we've got a lot of really strong educators, but this is an area. So we're doing some right now with local consultant, but then we need to add. Vertical alignment to that, all of our grades are doing and talking the same way, teaching the same.
That's being instituted by your leadership team, the CCSU?
Yeah, so, yeah, the S U leadership team, um, is vetting, or vetted programs. And then our elementary teachers volunteered to pilot some stuff, and then. We have enough of them that volunteered that Natalie and I went and asked her to others, so that we're first through eighth grade. Are gonna try to do some piloting this spring, so.
Any more questions? Because we have lots. Doing on student services. Um, we've got a bunch of big years. Any questions about student services that you can think about? Obviously, she's, I'm thanking Jen again for her help and, um, general message. Alright, moving on, we're gonna move down to, uh, board business, and in the board discussion, the first thing on the board discussion. It came up briefly, I don't quite know, um, enough about it to do anything other than just give you the floor.
So, w- we are, there's a couple of, uh, state grants out there that are designed to. Help to pay for some pollution control equipment on. Woodchuck plants or older wood heating plants, and the plant here, despite the fact that we just renovated it two years ago. It's eligible for the installation of this equipment, um, it was described to me as something that would, that costs around sixty two thousand dollars, but. You get two twenty five thousand dollar grants from two different sources, and, uh, the school would be responsible for twelve thousand of that cost. We don't have the grant, what I, what, you know, I was getting pushed by that, uh, which is named Barry, the guy from. Uh, that did the work on.
I'm just like, you know, Molly, whether I didn't see anything.
Yeah, well, he's, he's the one that called me up, oh, yeah, I understand, you guys are gonna do this. So basically, what I'm working for tonight is, we haven't even applied. I need permission, I need to know if you, if we apply and get that grant, those students won't spend. Twelve thousand dollars in its contribution.
And it's, it's pollution control and efficiency control on the wood chip, but.
Yes.
Even though it's two years old, it qualifies?
Well, it's not two years old, it's, um, it's really, it's really, it's two thousand seven, it's.
It's an older.
But I thought the person they fixed didn't pick that, I mean, it burns very, like, it's very rarely, like, smokes. So not to say that there's no pollution coming, you know, but.
Yeah, I know, it, it looks like it's burning.
It does, yeah.
That was my initial research, like, on you, and then I. But I, I would love it if you looked at it.
Okay, so what I, what, what I'll do is I'll tell them that we will apply, you don't have to commit the money. But I'm, you know, but I'm sensitive to the fact that we're telling the community over and over again that we're hanging on to money for emergencies, and that's twelve thousand dollars.
Is there a way to tap that, let's see, if it's.
I don't know, we got it, the guy that called me up, this Barry guy from Michigan, he's, he knows the system, put in, so. And he's just, like, I'm surprised, he might call me at eight o'clock, and I'd ask him, so to. Because, I mean, it's, he's got a conflict of interest, because it's his company's putting in there. So I'm not doing anything without board. Or okay.
I'm looking at that's numbers on what it would save efficiency costs.
I, I'm not sure that it's so much efficiencies of pollution. As, as I understand it. No, we are pumping particulates and, you know, out, out of any wood.
I mean, efficiency, like, efficiency wise, we burn. Complete chips unless the temperature gets to whatever low threshold and the oil, the oil. Procuses kick in, but, um, so it is, I mean, financially, it saves us a ton that way, like, we don't want it to go down. Cross running the oil for processes.
How often do we get chips? I know a wood chip, thus we end, but how often are we getting chips?
I think about every ten days.
So. So.
Ten to fourteen. They come, they come so early in the morning. There's a fresh pile of chips that's.
It's hard to get it out. I was I was here when they're, it's, it is not a truck that goes like this.
Yeah, it's not.
So it's it doesn't, it's not a tipper, it's a big truck.
Yeah, I I believe that's what Shauna said, that it's about we're burning up and we wouldn't have burned that. Much this winter.
Good year for eating costs.
Yeah.
I I think it's a lot of money.
Yeah.
It's a lot of money, so. And it's one of those that it's like I am very proud of environmental.
I think we should wait.
Let's wait a year.
Okay, the grants may not be there.
Oh, right.
Right, that's the thing we're doing, it's um, assumption that we might get.
I think it's a hard sell if there is efficiency built in, that we're getting cost savings, because that would be easier. Not again, I'm the same way about the environment, it's not that, but I, in terms of priorities, I think it's hard to justify.
Well, it's tough to know how much benefit of. Which is.
I I can look into that, I mean, I can, I can, I can talk to, let's say. Um what you just said.
Yeah.
What is this gonna make the parent more more efficient?
Is he gonna be, is he gonna be more efficient? And then what about our wood chips that we're burning? More harmful than oil, or otherwise, are we already doing that? Oh, I I don't know about that, but at least like what 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 would be the reduction on pollution? Are we talking about this is a twelve, twelve thousand dollars for a ten percent reduction? You know, twelve percent, twelve thousand dollars for a hundred percent.
What is tangible, what is tangible drop?
The only thing that makes me use, gives me some pause on this is the fact that the two funding sources, one is from uh. Uh public service department, do the share grant program, and another one is sports and parks, that's a Molly Willard. I'm just wondering if if this is a way to get ahead of some mandates. We get a lot of information.
Living in this building with our heating woes. If we're talking, putting money in our heating systems. That will create more efficiency, it would be having controls that.
Better spell out.
Yes, and that, and because right now the heat is on, and so if the heat had. Whatever, it runs at seventy five, all break when everybody's not here, all weekend, every, you know, there's not. There's not a good way to control it, so looking from that efficiency perspective, that would.
So in in your opinion, optimization occurs elsewhere regarding money spent.
But I I I do think Mark has a good point, like if they know something else is coming down the pipe, that we won't.
And we're gonna have to look into exactly that, that could be, that optimizing some of the other heating system that I'm now building. Take a lot more financial.
Yeah, it's a question that the, you know, finishing the work on the control system. That is, that will be a good investment of money whether we get grants.
Right, but we'll we'll kick ourselves later if the state comes down and says. You know.
Yeah, I can find out, you know.
We're we're that, that's such a, that's a way newer boiler than.
Yeah.
Like a lot of schools are running at this point.
And our, and yeah, and our oil premises were replaced the summer I started, so they're two thousand nineteen.
Or means pollution regulations, so they, right, but we probably be way under compared to other.
But relative to the. You guys are building to like similar similar states.
I'll try and talk to Molly Ward about, because this is a Barry guy, he's got, he's got four.
It seems like there's a conflict there and um it seems like also it's misinformation elsewhere, but. I just can't imagine that we're gonna be even somebody that we wanted them. That if they're given a grant line, they want grant money to book the ones that are Egypt and ours is not Egypt. But.
I think what we have here is. An age, age of design newly rebuilt.
Right.
My sense of it. Does that make sense?
We've got some new parts.
Right, but the design itself, it's just like, yeah, they went in and it, it wasn't working, it made it work.
Or detailing of what the twelve thousand prices, but there are enough to. Is that enough? I have a lot of policies that came down from the CCSU board at the last meeting. We ran, we had a list of uh great many. And so many of these here are recommended policies that were approved by the SU board. To send to the district boards for approval, they must be at this level, not that level. There were some other main course policies that. Um got published to you, that you would have seen that we adopted. Um at the SU level on behalf of all the schools in the district. Um it'd be good if you could get Eric to stop you doing that, or if he's actually at some point, or I can to think that up so you'll have it.
First, we talked about getting him the minutes.
Yeah, like that, I'll give him the minutes and then let him let him look at um some of the work we did at the SU board level at the last one, so that you can see all the policies. Required policies can be accepted by the CCSU board on that of all districts. Recommended policies come down to the districts through the SU, and then some policies are advisory only. And then they come and they don't have to be accepted, they have to be, they can be accepted, they can be amended. We're gonna look at a bunch of policies that are recommended for districts, and that the Danville district, um we're gonna accept them or. Amend them or um consider them. So I think some options. Take some options. The first, the the first one is probably the one that has the most um leeway at all of any, and the rest of them will be straightforward. And but I'm obviously we talked about it. And so the first one is policy E twenty, which will um replace, I think, policy F two.
Yes, yes.
And policy E twenty, if it's on its adoption, will replace F two, and it was about the community use of school facilities. And um do you, do you want to tell them uh the 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 concerns? Do you want me to read in the policy? Do you want to talk about who in the community uses the building? Do you want to talk about um how much of our administrative staff find this taking up the scheduling and use of the building?
You asking me or him?
Well, I, some of those questions, I can answer maybe the first or second.
I know, I can answer a lot.
So in terms of community use of your school building, I think to me the biggest. Well, first thing, I don't think you have the option under this policy and you have the option under state statute, this board could say, nobody from the community gets. We own it, we're not gonna argue. I don't think that's a sentiment of this, that too many things have I've done in this community. So the first part of this policy, you have to choose, you either ban use by out, by outsiders or you allow use.
So on that note, I'll turn to Sarah, can you name me? Five groups that that use it, or can you name me ten groups?
I probably ten.
Probably ten.
I mean, AAU, both the scouts, well, and Cub Scouts, so three different scouts. Um we've got different sports leagues, men's sports, women's sports leagues, we've got four H.
Maple.
Maple Festival.
But also, if we if we if we chose that top policy, we would be denying our own children, they you get access to the facility, the only facilities they have access. Right, so.
And we've got five AAU teams that practice here, right?
I don't think.
I don't think you should, I'm not recommending.
Yeah, so I, yeah.
I I can't imagine denying.
Well, or even even our men's leagues and our women's leagues and, you know, like keeping.
Boy scouts, girl scouts, whatever.
In the now of the school, keeping the school important in the community.
Can we say something like there should be a Danville resident participating? So it's, I mean, are we allowing? Use from, say, Waterford, you know what I'm saying? Or do we have any, can we set?
We've been through this, um I think the first year you got here, we went through this matter, but. And we restricted use to having some, in each one of the groups that used it, someone had to come in and be the responsible.
Yeah, so I, if you guys want. Randy, I have Randy's friend, I'm really quick to get me what he has, because he does a lot of the staff league. Or like AAU, and I do think like when he's scheduling all of the. Facility stuff, that becomes a lot during actual sport seasons. Um.
On the weekends.
Yeah. Um but this, so what this has built into um is a fee structure, like we don't charge Molly. With girls, we don't charge them to come in and use the. Um cafeteria, the Little League did their annual board meeting or whatever. They just five of them sat in the cafeteria, but we do have like tournaments that use our facility. Uh and different things, they then have to provide insurance and stuff like that. Um and then if it's something like you mentioned, Molly, like AAU on a Saturday, they have to cover the custodial fee and stuff like that. They're supposed to, and that all interchanges and it's back, usually jumps back in.
Do we collect, other than that, please, say, which is the not connected to Danville group at all? With no kids in the program, do we charge for those groups at all, other than the custodial fees?
It depends on like what their purpose is. No, like, yeah, like the Maple, I didn't want to, the Maple meeting or.
And they're in Danville.
This one's gonna come up because they use.
Right, so that's.
Part of the discussion. They use it specifically.
So like, boy scouts is, Cub Scout, I don't know which scouts, they're doing their. This, you know, this weekend and next weekend. Um we don't usually charge them, but we do charge like the different sports leagues and stuff like that. Um based on two, whether it's a free event or you, there's like this. Oh, wait, I mean, we're not looking at the profit off of it, I think, I think like you said, like this is. A huge, we all know that, like we see that all the time, like there's a huge hub and center for this town and I wouldn't. Yeah, I wouldn't want that to go away at all, so. We did, we kind of weigh that, and we we had a lot of discussions actually last year. Um with administration and Randy and Sean was part of that too. About how you make sure that equitable what the fee structure is versus like whether it's a. Maybe it's whether it's a for-profit, non-profit type of. So.
Do you feel comfortable telling me what Randy thinks, or should I ask, specifically ask Randy about this in terms of how much strain is the burden?
Um I don't know that he answered what how much strain it puts on him specifically. Um but he said.
Either one of the young.
Yeah, um so he said, um. So, okay, so if a group wants to use, he didn't so much answer that question, but instead if a group wants to use the gym for a nonprofit event. Yes, if there is any Danville taxpayers or taxpayers' children participating, and then if that's a, yeah, that's um generally a. Free uh use, and then we don't ask for insurance separately. If a group wants to use it for um something for profit, we do charge a fee based on that event. Um. And all of this used to all be scheduled through facilities prior to him taking it on, so he's taken on a lot of that sport stuff. I do think, I do know, living with one of the A Ds. Um the scheduling piece is really tricky, but that's why AAU is going on now too, and is. Um you know, he he works to schedule the Danville sport stuff and then he squeaks in. Um and like, that that's also who's gets the other gyms locally, so.
Yeah, that's the next dry place. Okay, so so in terms of um the gym, is your sense that what we're doing is what we're seeing the community do?
Yeah, the gym and like the cafeteria spaces, we're we're not like not attached to the kitchen, but like finding that space for reading and then thing.
So Cassie's okay with all that?
It, I I did specifically ask Cassie to. Not a lot of time and then literally put it on the local calendar.
Can you just like do the whole timer thing with the?
It take for the doors and stuff.
Alright.
It's not a lot of time.
You don't know how to do it really hard.
It is very true, that is very true. It takes me a lot longer than it takes her, but. Um I've I've gotten faster, so, um, yeah.
Moving to discussion, the use of the kitchen facilities, just as a for instance yesterday. Um two different groups, or two days ago that was, two different groups that are not part of the school, use the kitchen. Um for the purpose of putting on a dinner that was not for students. Students were there, community members were there, some staff was there, but it wasn't um the community, it wasn't a school event. My understanding from the CCSU meeting is that in that scenario, if there's a problem. Um the school is not covered, it leaves that, is that correct?
I, in that particular example, because we were putting on a meal for. On time eating day when one of the events was a school hall, I would argue that was.
You think that was good?
I think that one was.
Okay, in the in in the event that there's a dinner that goes on that is for a school event, that like just some local buzzraiser group puts on a dinner. Tries to raise money in amongst the game of community that involves students or a student, that activity, that's covered?
Yeah.
And then the only one that I can think of that comes on here is the Maple Dinner that is um an outside event.
Yep, yeah, it happens annually in January there usually.
Already have it?
Yeah, yeah, it's it's happened, yeah, it's just the Maple meeting, they meet, they meet in the auditorium, I I don't even.
There's like regional. I get, I haven't been able to go.
Okay.
I get the invitation.
Like I forgot you sugar.
Regional, it's a regional group.
Yeah.
Yeah, these are, I think they're. Yeah, um so there are local sugar makers who go to that, I mean, but.
I only know about it because I watched this one year before, and um teachers put it on, staff up to school puts it on, basically. Um but not as staff of the school.
So and actually that act, this actually makes me think that so the fire department's also acting.
I mean.
Um, yeah, again, I think Shelley is helping with that because her son is part of the fire department, but it. It's a benefit, benefiting the school, I don't think at all.
So insurance, we don't think, at that point, is not education related.
I didn't think about that.
This is one of the policies at issue. So. I wonder for those types of events, they can. Um appeal to our uh chamber of commerce.
If the out, if the outside group has its own liability insurance, if you don't.
Well, yeah, the fire department will have its own liability insurance, but like the Maple.
They would. Maple League, I doubt.
But the Maple League, I would be, could go under the chamber. Because like that's what we do for like movie nights, and that's what we do for fairs and whatever, and the policy, that actual policy is just a simple. Add the event to the thing, we pay the.
Yeah.
Twenty five bucks or whatever.
So that's a, it's a low number?
Yeah, 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 it's. The chamber has upon the main policy, we just add.
And the Maple is a fundraiser too, because they do.
Yeah, this is the part, this is the part I didn't know about the Maple, and I wasn't. Questions simply like Maple, but I didn't know that, I thought the chamber had a a easy way to sign on. The chamber has a very easy way to have a liability insurance, so if we do have any stuff like that.
Yeah.
We can work with the chamber. We have, we have ends with them, so.
This can also offer, that's a, you have the ability to buy a liability.
It's not, it's not twenty five dollars.
I don't, I haven't priced it.
Did you look at it? No, what? The number that was set was four.
No, I'm not for that now, that was something else.
Mark, do we, should we? Ask like the Maple people at the fire department to give us a copy of their liability before we do it then?
Should at least, well, they're sure, that's what it's.
This is, yeah, this is very specifically for sports and for the gymnasium.
You could have a very similar.
I think we're gonna.
That's that's a lot what this policy is actually about.
Yes.
That's what 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 becomes F two is actually about. The fact that if somebody accidentally burns down the kitchen, but not. Students, then your insurance doesn't have to pay for it.
New steers are very.
They're very sensitive.
And girl scouts and boy scouts, we fall under, we have kids, right? We actually do have, you know, I know, yeah, we do for benefits students, right, okay.
Do you have any Danville students?
They're all Danville.
Here's, here's a question, I mean, and with, and like Randy said, he specifically asked. The teams, like, is it benefiting, are we saying Danville because we have students? That are just from like in Danville, so does it, is it either a student that attends Danville school, even if they're.
I would just look at it.
Enrolled students.
So it's just, just to give you some, this whole thing flared up in Cabot. Uh, because they, for years, they've had, there's a, an organization in Cabot that was supposed to, uh, a turkey dinner. They, and they're done at the school and use the kitchen at the school to prepare the meal. And for a number of years, they always did it under the guise of the Cabot Community Association. And they had liability insurance, and that's, that's how it was covered. And then two years ago. For some reasons that I don't understand, CCA, CCA. Lost its liability or failed to renew it or something, and when that group went to schedule their thing, they said, oh, by the way, you don't have any insurance. So this group on its own went out and got the liability covered somewhere and it cost them four hundred dollars. So when it came up for this year, that group went. Oh, we don't, you know, that's four hundred dollars, it's a fundraiser, I mean, you're raising money, and said, that's a big. A, a big chunk of what we actually make off of this, and you know, one of the board members said, no, don't worry about it, you just. You know, there's a, a policy and there's a procedure in place, and the board members set up, so we gotta. Her meetings are aargh. You know, and what, if you say you have liability coverage or you actually have like. The best, and then this policy came up for revision, so that's why.
I don't think.
Hey.
Hey.
Device share, folks, still on board? So far. Do you know how many committees there are and how many you're on?
Tim nominated you as the nominee.
My house.
I have another question before we do whatever with this, we also have people use the weight room. Uh, we have. Maybe. Uh. So there's a whole like weight room access. Uh, for that too, that I can pass around, it's a different piece.
Thank you, there's a using your own wrist for the weight room?
Basically, but then to use the weight room, it's only available during non-school hours and those sorts of things, but that means they have a fob that they can access. The gym and stuff like that, are we? Fine with that still, this is, this has been a longstanding thing, it used to be a lot of eight keys before we had electronic access until we. Called back those, and because it's fob access, we can shut it off and shut, turn it on in an instant, so that security wise feels better to me. Um, but.
There's a lot of that, that really takes me.
But, and a lot of the really dear staff on office.
Oh, I would say a lot of them, but not all of them.
Some of the community.
For sure. Yes, so, uh, do this, it just made Randy and me think about this too, and making sure that that. Um.
Have there been issues with, when are you saying? But the gym and the weight room are.
Not that get reported to us as far as.
But then, but then, but people sign this form, because they can't go up to school without waiting their rights.
Correct.
Our, our big concern would be damage to the rights.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
And then also one that runs twenty miles on, wearing it out every other day.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Are you?
No, no, that's the other crazy runner.
There's, there's a machine runs, um, runs.
It runs and runs.
Target for membership.
Well, yes, here's your discounted gym. So, just wanted, again, I think we're fine, we haven't had issues, there's camera and stuff that lets us see all of it, the fob access can tell us too, like who accesses. Um, the building when in, um. I think before the electronic door access with the fob, I would, I wouldn't have been a school with it.
Well, my door used to be propped open, we could, and we, we make these propped open sockets. And then one of the guys was the sex, that was the old protocol, and that's in, that's in the operating.
Yeah. And this is, yeah, but, so.
So, yes, um. Back when there was, uh, sniffed the keys, uh, there was. Issues with the adults giving their keys to.
Everyone.
Um, yeah. And you'd have a bunch of seventh and eighth graders coming in here, rolling a gem. Um, having a fob wouldn't stop that.
Um, no, it doesn't stop that.
There's cameras.
There's cameras that have a fob, so that's a thing.
Okay. You know, how many, and you know who's responsible if it happens, because you.
And you shop while like that, okay.
Yeah, yes, and so that's the, that's the nice thing is that. It's, again, something that I tried to do that took me very long, it's like, oh, you did, I'll just tell you. Um, but you can turn them off, it's instantaneous. So, yeah, it doesn't stop that, I mean, and, but I also think.
Accountability.
There's accountability, um, the cameras, that, when we upgraded cameras with that security upgrade a couple of years ago, they're lovely. Um, and so, I don't think we've seen the same stuff that was even happening like when I first started five years ago. Um, because, and Randy's worked really hard to take some of that as well, because he doesn't want to explore the damage by people just coming in and shooting hoops. So.
There was somebody on Monday afternoon, they came trying to get in back row.
Hmm.
He's one of the people, well, the seventh, the third meeting, he said, can't shoot hoops, we'll know there's a bunch of chairs out here. So.
You can go up to the block top.
What about that?
Even the other day, it was like, they actually know the basketball court.
Yes, it's not great.
He's like, they're knowing the basketball court.
You're all figured out.
So in terms of, in terms of the protocol for the weight room, I don't personally see an issue, I think this is well laid out, I appreciate Randy's work here, I appreciate. The idea of the fobs and how effective they've been. Um, in terms of the use of the facilities, I don't have an issue. Uh, I think that we should definitely, if somebody's gonna use our kitchen, ask them to seek, um. Some sort of insurance and provide that.
Yeah, and Natalie just pulled up our, we've got a different, and I didn't print it off, but we've got a different facilities use form that we just added. Um. The insurance, yeah.
Could you, could you send me the electronic, um, copy, like, blanket, because some people are aware. Double check with Kathy. Okay. And then I said, okay, great, are they available online, the ones?
No, because I, we don't, we want them to call us, so.
I won't like it.
You could, I mean, they can just call us, like, if they want, yeah.
Have you heard of any recent issues with the kitchen?
Uh, I haven't, yes, I've been. I'm just wondering, I, I, I had to go retrieve something out of the back of someone's car today. Some missing piece from, from the. I got. Have, yes, sir. I'm an appropriate.
Somebody took something?
A piece of equipment that the library, one of the library leaders, um, it wasn't a piece of equipment, it was a tray. That, you can look at it, you say, I'll just put some stuff in and take it home and bring it back soon, it's a tray that holds lettuce every day. And so I, this morning, said, get me this back right away. And I got it back right away.
Yeah.
I, it was within the hour I had it back, I was in somebody else's car, I was in that thing.
They don't know about.
So.
Better G and H, D or H.
Yes, so, so, yes, just to be fair, um, we need to mix the first option, taking the second possible. Right.
And then we.
Oh, gee. Of age.
That's, that needs to be struck, that's. It's not that wrong, so we're not gonna do age.
Right, age, yeah.
Do age. She probably don't. The part about guns on.
Having firearms on.
The firearm side, campus part. Yeah, you might have already taken.
I took it out of this.
Because you said, because it says right in here, I recommend it be struck. As it is.
Yeah, I took it out of the working copy already.
Yeah.
We're never, we're never gonna.
Say again.
Yeah, no.
Taking out it was.
E, H, H, G.
Yeah, and it's already, yeah.
The nothing. So it feels strong.
Flip over, flip your finger right there.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah. So that's strong. We went with option G.
For ready.
Firearms.
Of the non-options. Okay, so we have to, are we approving this?
We're approving it as long as, as long as we have a protocol in place on point, people using the kitchen.
So can I make a motion that we approve? The code E twenty, um, as long as we have a protocol for.
You wanna put. A. Whether it's. Uh, the superintendent shall decide what procedures should be put in school. So it's already on, yeah.
Perfect.
So we don't need to add anything to the kitchen, no. Have a motion to approve, um, code E twenty to supersede F two, at a second, to approve code E twenty to supersede F two as designated by us, the officers we chose. All in favor of approving code E twenty to supersede F two, please say aye.
Aye.
And you all. Uh, so the rest of these, like I said, the rest of these are not as. Still very technical. Policy D twenty-one, um. Will recommend that we, um. Administer and develop multiple systems of support. We are.
Everybody did.
We are, we are, we are, we're already complying with this. Uh, this is already our plan, it's already in place.
This is where interventionists fall in, um, and we have solid interventionists in the elementary. That where it becomes less solid is in the secondary. Those interventionists for years.
Those are the, those are the ones that were grant funded, then just we have the last twenty-six of one of those. Bunch of.
So then with that, yeah, so without them, then you look at, we're creative.
I just make a motion.
For.
Each one of.
Fifteen twenty-one. So it's a motion from Tim, second from Eric, to approve D twenty-one tiered systems of support. In, in further discussion, all in favor of approving D twenty-one tiered systems of support policy? Please say aye.
Aye.
On D twenty, again, real straightforward, this is. Yeah, curriculum development and coordination, um. Does anybody have any questions about it, we get a curriculum appointment from the director for a reason, we have a, we have a continuous improvement plan, we have our curriculum. Curriculum director in place, we spoke earlier today about curriculum development, if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion right now.
Some rules.
Okay, D twenty recommended curriculum development coordination, this is one of the ones that Mark couldn't understand why it wasn't wired at the other level, students go through. If it was already in place.
Yeah, I just found out the reason is that there's nothing in statute. That addresses it, and that's what's the SBA script. It's not the even statute.
So there's no law requiring. Motion, second motion, all in favor of that one, please say aye.
Just like the, it'd be all right, statute.
So, the next one here is F twenty. D twenty, F twenty is fiscal management and general financial accountability. It's the only thing that was interesting here. The one. Now, this is about getting bids.
Mm-hmm.
This, these protocols are in place, these procedures are in place, um, what was the tweak on this one, isn't this?
Uh, you're thinking of the capitalization, oh. The next one.
The, the, yeah, the result tweak on this, and this was one that also, I argued to Superglass, he was like. We do all the finances, why Kim, why is Kim, which affects required? Same, same answer.
So this, everything's in place, this, this is not something that this, this report to start filling ground, because it's gonna cause chaos.
Yeah.
We have different policies.
I'll move to that then.
Eric's moved to adopt the claim. All people adopting F twenty fiscal management, general financial, you say aye. F twenty-three is capitalization of assets. This is about putting stuff in dangerous accounts, this is about telling us how our buildings are, this is about naming things they have about, this is all already happened to groups who like. This is, yeah, so, there's an optional for the group of assets that is super standard under gap, that's. Uh, sometimes there's some criteria that it has to be through a single vendor, but.
Uh, Eric, I think just had more to do, the grouping thing has more to do, if, by saying you can group assets, it means that you can have one category of assets, which is. All of the computers we bought.
Yes.
That's what I know.
Yeah, I just, it's usually, it's like, it has to come from a single vendor, so you have to buy all your.
Oh, yeah, we don't have that.
Well, you don't have to like, you're not.
Just year by year.
It's just that you can only capitalize it if you buy from a sole source, uh, so like if you buy a bunch of Macs all at one time. Or a bunch of Dells all at one time, you can't like go on Amazon and like say like, oh, I'll get this one, and then a couple of years later, get, oh, I'm gonna get this one, this one has to be. Uh, a large enough single order over the threshold grouped together.
Yeah.
It's typically the way it does, but it doesn't happen. Obviously.
I don't think that's something that affects us in, in our purchasing, it's more in the, it's more in the cases. I don't know, we probably buy two hundred. For staff and students, right? That's a guess, it may not be definite, um, but then we want to depreciate them over.
See further discussion. I'm asking you.
When we do that, Steve, that's, for the highlight and here's. Just like other names.
We should adopt it.
You know, on this.
I would, yeah.
Alright.
Leaving an essence. I haven't been in very many places where they would. So the motion is to adopt it as it's written, the yellow states, the motions from Bayville, second, and Stanford, all in favor of adopting F twenty-three, reset. F, F twenty-four, uh, prevention of conflict of interest in profurna, from the chief of the court in this one. At the SU level, we had to figure out what happens if there's an extra t-shirt, a box of t-shirts. Do you have to initiate a protocol, so we put a minimum value of twenty-five dollars over, if there's an extra t-shirt to box, it's fine. That's what, um, one of the parts is there, that's kind of three hundred and fifty possibilities.
Uh, it's, it's five dollars?
Yeah, you get an older version.
You guys, you guys are saying, you're saying, we changed it to twenty-five, the official version, so, we, we talked, we talked about it at five dollars. But we changed it.
I was blank when I got the draft policy, I put in five dollars.
He said it was five dollars, he hasn't bought a t-shirt in years, he's only getting like.
I was thinking.
And so it was, that's just large. Sure, it's just, it's just a nonsense number to make sure that we don't put people in positions where they feel awkward, is a mistake. Other than that, it's just about that, making deals on the side.
Right.
Being the vendor.
Right.
Any question? In quality of twenty-five dollars, make a motion. So that is F twenty-four, I've got a motion, F twenty-four, I have a second, and Eric, to approve F twenty-four. All in favor of approving F twenty-four, please say aye. After that one is E twenty. E twenty. Um, I left stuff, we did personnel recruitment, selection, funding, background checks, um, the only thing here that I remember that was, um. Of any real interest was that we required applicants to pay for their own fingerprinting, and that's the standard policy, and that's been three years.
Yeah.
In the supervisory. In the supervisory.
There's, uh, does the updated version not have the? Training. Actual, it's, no, it's, it's, I'm reading it very tiny. It looks like that was already taken.
They're all. Yeah, the updates are linked. The updated ones are linked, we looked at the policy, the original policy itself.
And on the E twenty policy. I created a Danville about.
Motion to go. Motion on B twenty, second on B twenty to approve the personnel recruitment selection and funding and background checks. All in favor of that one? They say aye. Last one here is F forty-six. F twenty-six is about security. Anybody have any questions about security? If they have any questions, don't pause. We talked earlier about security cameras being confidential as part of our monitoring system in the way. Using our doors will require to have a minor obvious, require to have a part of our forest. Any questions here?
Annual notice provided to students now, how is that?
In that case, you know, just do your coffee.
Okay, expectation of privacy, that's where. Right, we're never gonna put cameras in the bathrooms. Nope. I would, I would, we're putting it in the bathroom.
Why nobody in the Hollylands? Like in, in my building, they're actually blocked, blocked out when they're, they can see into a classroom.
Yeah.
Because there's an expectation of privacy within even classroom.
Well, there's an expectation that the teacher has.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Monitor of what.
That's a labor, that's more of a labor relations issue. That's keeping the, the wheel screen.
Yeah, I think because of how many of our rooms have the outdoor doors, it's a, not a. Oh, well, see, and then, so that makes a difference to you. And then the ones, it's, they're pretty straight.
Yeah, but so in that case, you're tailing the cameras to make sure. Privacy. I'm looking for fifty-five, one, twenty-six on screen. Okay, um. Couple things, uh, you actually coming up, um. We're checking right now. Somebody here from. I know publicity or public comment, no public comment, no public. We have, um. A building committee meeting scheduled for next week. You guys want to come in and get an update about? You wanna have the building committee sit, have a short meeting where we tell them that we have had a conversation, the same thing on Ascension. Um, what do you want about that?
Um, might be good to have the main, especially after a town. Budget now.
Okay, so.
Or when do you think, Mark? What did TruX say about the proposal? Did they get an estimate of how long that will take?
I got, I had an email from, uh, Cam late this afternoon. He wanted me to call if he had a question. He said it's all, it's already, just have one.
Maybe we should wait if there's a proposal, revised proposal coming from TruX, that if we wait for that. Then we have more to discuss at the meeting about where to go with that proposal.
Well, it's, it sounds imminent. Is it supposed to be this week or next?
Next Thursday. This is this Thursday, so next Thursday.
When, when's the? At what point do we have to follow up on that?
Um, oh, by any time, but it's.
It's, it's a logistical question of who, who, who wants to come in, whether or not their time is valued.
Well, if we get the proposal in the next three days.
Right, when's the new part?
Fourteenth at six.
Right.
Um, the next one's the eighteenth of April.
Mark, tomorrow, could you reach out to TruX and say, you know, we have a meeting scheduled? Do you think they'll help us in by that date?
Yeah, so I think I, I need to, I need to talk to Cam. So he's asked. Do you want to talk to me about something? He said, let me know when, when is a good time. I'm available all day on Friday. I will try to call, I'll try to catch him on the phone and see what that is. He said it's otherwise mostly pulled together.
But that needs to come to this or not that.
You two and me.
Right, because you haven't signed off on the proposal.
Figure out, we want to have, I'll convince TruX come to this meeting. Okay, so we're just getting the proposal, bringing it to discuss with.
Or does that go to the school board first?
It is, it is a bit heated, but we're not gonna have it to discuss. We, we probably just have it in school work first.
Right. Right.
So. Okay.
Okay, that's the case, then the only option really would be to. Make it for this one.
Let me think this group.
This is meeting planning, we can do this offline. Um, you can give it some thought.
Okay.
Um, if we have some better information, we'll get some better information tomorrow morning, we might know some things, but in terms of, in terms of this being. Meeting planning for next, next meeting, I'll probably send an email out to the.
If, just a second, I'll log here. If you have. They have the, the proposal from TruX. That first of the week. Would you want to like go over it with the building committee and get their opinion on what's in it? And then you could act on it at that.
We can act on it as a board at that meeting, so we'll be there to, to act on it, that's.
That's what I was leaning, they're doing two separate meetings, cause they're gonna wanna know.
Cause otherwise you're gonna, this, unless they're gonna call a special meeting with this board. You're not gonna meet again till late.
I think we should do that and then, right, it saves time. They're gonna wanna hear about it anyway.
So the, so our official, our official, uh, strategy now is leave the meeting on, have it simple, the board stuff can act on. With the committee's insights.
Yeah. And Mark will talk to TruX about.
Okay, so the meeting's on, uh, next Thursday. If, if, if there's information, now send an email out. That's that meeting. Our next meeting, otherwise per schedule, is, um. April second. That's the first Tuesday of April. The day after. So our next, that would be our regular board meeting, pending no, um, other information. Our next board meeting will be CCSU. Did we just schedule negotiation on the sixteenth? No, it's not.
It's on my calendar. No, it's not the sixteenth. Fifteenth is a Saturday.
Those are the meetings we have scheduled, um. That's our next meeting date. Future agenda items, it's gonna be obviously TruX calls. The, the, we'll probably put the proposal from there. I don't know of anything else that's not ordinary business as of right now. Because I won't have the information from CCSU board yet. And with that said, I didn't.